Meeting is called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. Councilmember Ervey?
Here.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Wassinger?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Councilmember Trachis?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you.
I move for the approval of the Journal of Meeting of April 11, 2017.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The April 11, 2017 Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we'll move to Communications. Madam Vice Chair, there are no tax compromises, zoning matters, or voting bridge matters this evening, so we'll move to Other Communications. Under Other Communications, item number one. Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number two, and that will be the order. Item number three, 7th District.
Receive, file, and the agreement be approved as recommended.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, 6th District.
Receive and file, please.
So ordered. Item number five? Receive and file, and that will be the order. Item number six? Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. Item number seven, 7th District.
Receive and file.
So ordered. Item number eight, 6th District.
Receive and file, please.
So ordered. Item number nine, 3rd District. Receive and file. So ordered. Item number 10? Receive and file, and that will be the order. Item number 11, all districts? Receive, file, and hold on the order of business, and that will be the order. Item number 12? Receive, file, and hold on the order of business, and that will be the order. Oh, I'm sorry. You referred to the council as a committee of the whole. And that will be the order. Item number 13? Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. Item number 14? Receive, file, and the annual settlement be referred to the county auditor, and that will be the order. Item number 15? Receive, file, and the administrative director be directed to notify the director of the Missouri Department of Revenue of the voter's approval on Proposition P, and that will be the order. No add-on this evening, Madam Vice Chair. It's time to second.
Nothing further to add.
All right. And there are no reported special committees, so we'll move to the public forum. Tonight, we have 13 speakers. When you're called, please come forward, state your name and address for the records. You will have three minutes. Should we notify when your three minutes have ended? First speaker this evening is Ron Gaus.
Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Ron Gaus. I'm with Christ Church, United Church of Christ in Maplewood, Missouri. We have been the home to the St. Louis County Doors to Success Program since, for 17 years. I think we may have initiated as the first location. For the first 12 of those years, we did it for free because we were told, can you hear me? Okay. Because we were told there was no money to pay us any money for the rent. So we were glad to do that. Five years ago, we were told, well, there's a little money. We can pay you utilities. And we said, how about $100 a month? And this astute body created an ordinance that allowed us $1,200 a year. But somebody said, no, we're only going to give you 900. So the ordinance said 1,200. We only got 900. Within the last two years, we found out that there's another church up in North County who, five years ago, instead of receiving $900 a year, received $12,000 upfront and $2,000 a month for the same program, 2,000 square feet instead of 1,500 square feet. So we asked for more this year. We said, we think we deserve $2,000. We were told, it's outrageous. You don't deserve it. You won't get it. We said, how about 1,500? No. We're offering you 600. This was in a meeting with your representatives. They sent us a letter a week later saying $800. We said, no, we don't think that's fair. And they said, it is fair, and if you don't think it's fair, here's a list of seven pages of appraisers. One of them will charge you $2,000 to tell you that we're right. And we said, nah, thanks. We'll do it a different way. So we called everybody in Maplewood that had property, not on Big Ben, not on Manchester, found that there were four properties. All four of the properties were a dollar per square foot per month, $12 per square foot per year, which meant our $1,500 for 1,500 square feet was exactly right. We asked for that again. We were told we were again asking an outrageous amount. Finally, we received a letter that said, we're offering you $1,000 a month. That's all we're offering. And without it being said, penalized it by saying, we're only going to give you a one year contract, which means we're looking at maybe ending the program through their choice in one year after 17 years. That ain't right, folks. That ain't right. So here's what I'm asking. Oh, wait a minute. It gets better. After we got your ordinance that said $12,000, is that after three minutes? I'm sorry. Can I have a little more?
You can just wrap it up.
It's heartfelt. Thanks.
It does, just quickly.
I'll keep it real quick.
Thank you.
After we got your ordinance that said $12,000 a year, we got an email last week that said, oh, by the way, you don't get any money until you sign the contract, a contract that we had asked for back in October. But if they're right in that email, we'll cut $4,000 out of the $12,000. Here's what I'm asking. Can somebody else please take a look at this? I've got a ton of papers here. I'm done right now. But if somebody could take a look into this, it's entertaining and fascinating. That's all I got.
Thank you.
You could contact my office. You can hand it to Jen Under, please. Who did you contact? Who were you?
Do you want me to use names?
No, just the department.
It's confusing. There's the Department of Transportation. There's the Department of, who handles the program itself. I'm not sure who they are.
Contact my office, please, tomorrow, and then we'll...
Councilman Dolan?
5th District. Maplewood's in the 5th District.
Yes. Thank you. Sorry it took longer.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mike Perry.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to express my disappointment. Last meeting, you guys had the bill number 78 dealing with the bridge on Lewis Road fail to pass, even though the initial time it came through, there was unanimous approval. And at this point, it failed to pass on its final. I do not understand the logic that occurred from that, but I think it was a missed opportunity because of the safety issues of concern with this bridge. It's falling apart. It spans the Amtrak as well as freight railways. Pieces of concrete fall off of this onto the railway, plus the fact that lots of people use this to access their homes, businesses, and farms. I can't speak to the businesses or the homes because I don't live in that area, but I have been frequenting that area since 1982. We keep a horse in that area, and we're constantly watching these bridges deteriorate. As far as residential, there are new houses being built at all times back there. Construction equipment has to go over these bridges. When I say bridges, there's a sister bridge less than a mile away that's the exact same age. Both of them built in 1930, and they're both in very similar condition. I think the Lewis Road Bridge is rated as 2 and a score of 0 to 100. And the Allen Road Bridge is listed as 17. So both are in very bad condition. Where I have most of my knowledge is dealing with people or with cattle that are raised in the area. Right now, we have problems getting grain delivered to feed those cattle. The gentleman who delivers this grain will not drive over the Allen Road Bridge because of the weight limit. He can't do it. So we have to take a dump truck, drive it several miles to a point where we can then offload the grain onto the dump truck. So it's costing us additional work. But the main concern that I have is the safety issue that's there. Both bridges are deteriorating. Both bridges are highly used because of the businesses that are in the area, attracting multiple cars. The businesses also attract supply trucks, large trucks, and equipment for construction that occurs in the area. I think this presents an opportunity for the council to consider both bridges at the same time. So that may be something for you to think about for the future. Could save money in keeping the construction at the same time in the same area. And I want to keep it short, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Susan Mayo.
I just want to say I am a resident of Afton. I think I know someone else that was from Afton some time ago. But I would like to say that the county council, east-west gateway, want to reduce Gravois Road to two lanes. I am a resident since, let's see, 1970. I moved out for about four years, so I've been in Afton a long time. It's just the thought that I've seen it go from two lanes to four lanes to five lanes when they put in for left turns. So I don't understand why we are reducing lanes when it is a state highway. It doesn't belong to St. Louis County. And I know Afton is, they said, you're just out there. We're not city. We don't have a mayor. We don't have anybody to stand up for us. So us residents will have to do this. So I would just like to say that I think if we reduce this roadway to two lanes, you're asking for a road rage. We have big trucks that go on our street. I do like the improvements that we're doing to the Afton Plaza. We need growth and development. But it's just wrong in taking away the streets. So I would just like to say, please keep our streets four lanes. That's what we need because you get it from the city, they run a reduce down to two lanes. We're just going to cause a traffic jam, so people will go around Afton. They won't even want to come to our area anymore. So I would just like to say, please take it into consideration that we need our roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Rockne Dollarheim.
Thank you very much. I'd like to also address bill number 78, Lewis Road and the Allen Road Bridges. We've lived in that area since 1980. We've seen the deterioration of the bridge, both bridges. Along that road, in fact, there's about 700 acres approximately out there that the only way you could get to it is over the bridge on Allen Road. If that bridge goes out, the residents that are there cannot get in or out. It's surrounded, three quarters of the property by the Merrimack River, and the other side is the railroad track. The railroad track has two tracks on it. It's a primary artery through St. Louis. I don't know if you remember, but in the past, they have hauled tomic waste down that railroad and taken it through St. Louis. And to think about one of those bridges, either one of them, falling on a train that's carrying the tomic waste scares me to death. The other thing that I see every day is a school bus going back and forth, carrying children to school and from school. And with some of the crashes that have happened around the country lately, I cannot get out of my mind the picture of a school bus driving across one of those bridges and going down under the railroad track. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jennifer Byrd.
My name is Jennifer Byrd. I live at 9244 Laurel Hill Drive in Crestwood, and I guess I signed in on the right sheet so I got to come speak early. Last week, I addressed the council, and I wanted to know some numbers. We saw these flyers talking about how so many percentage of people want this great streets in Afton, which of course, I think you all know by now, I'm opposed. So I found out what the numbers of attendees were, where you have 98% of the people wanting the Main Street feel, and 79% are okay on a potential lane reduction. Well, the numbers, this is from community input. More than 220 residents and business owners participated in the three-day workshop and provided input through keypad polling, mapping exercises, and one-on-one discussions. Wow, 220? And the population is 48,200, also by Great Streets numbers, apparently. Let's see, where do I have it? Somewhere in here, I had their numbers. Oh, second page, I guess it was. Afton zip code, 48,200. Afton CDP, which is a census-designated place population, is 20,370. So 220 people asking for, or coming to put their input. And then the keypad mapping was, on that keypad input, was there ever an item that said E, none of the above? Was the choice of not having anything done even ever presented? Because I'm kind of suspecting that it wasn't. Because what I'm finding with some of these studies, and I'm not a lawyer, but I'm pretty sure you're not allowed to lead your witnesses. And to me, the way that the questions are asked and designed is leading. So, and then of course, it's misleading when you report the information to the general public. Now, in 45 minutes today, that's what time I could squeeze out extra, I spoke to 13 people, went to random neighborhoods, did a random survey of my own, because we had 220 participants here. So I thought, well, let me check this out. So I hit some folks on Weber, on Palmetto, on Shepherd Drive, Vita Drive. 13 people in 45 minutes. That includes the fact that I knocked on houses where there were no people. And do you know that every single one of these people were opposed? And I didn't even have to sell them. I didn't even have to give them the facts and the figures. They're like, what? Take away two lanes on Gravois and make it one lane each way? That's crazy. It's not going to help business. I think government getting out of the way of business and stop overregulating and taxing is a way to increase and improve business climate entirely, not dictating what's going to happen and then making us spend our money to make it happen. And again, I'd like to see you put that on, put it through your neighborhoods and see how people like it. And while we're talking change, let's change the council time meetings to 7 o'clock when we can all get home from work. I mean, I know we all have to work and support the council, but let us get a chance to get home and, from work, and get our families dealt with, and then have a 7 o'clock meeting so we can all attend. Thank you.
Next speaker is Tom Sullivan.
Madam Chair, I urge the council to reject bill number 94, $100,000 from the Convention and Recreation Trust Fund for the Magic House. The trust fund was created in 1990 when county voters approved an increase in the hotel motel tax to pay the county's portion of the dome's cost, $180 million. The surplus can go for any general revenue purpose, but instead, it has been spent foolishly. The big ticket for non-dome expenditures is about $110 million for the Cardinals' new stadium in downtown St. Louis. It would have been built with or without the county's money. The Cardinals essentially paid $50 million for a team whose valuation has just been increased by Forbes to $1.8 million. They didn't need any help. The Convention and Visitors Commission has been given millions of dollars from the fund, and it's been hard to see what it has accomplished. In 2011, when Steve Stinger was council chair, the self-proclaimed South County taxpayer watchdog, the council approved $250,000 to the CVC to go toward a $750,000 party. A lot of money went right down a rat hole. Another year, the CVC was given $1.1 million for an initiative. The CVC said the county will get $88 back for every dollar. Has anyone seen the $90 million that was promised? It isn't surprising that people, jobs, and revenue have left St. Louis County in record numbers when tax dollars are spent foolishly while so many needs go unmet. About $125 million or more will be spent irresponsibly from the Convention and Recreation Fund. Please don't add to it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next speaker is Lisa Pennet.
Lisa Pennet, 2915, 3 Acres Lane. I'm here, well, actually, let's just back up. I am here right now, but I ran here because we went out and we did our own study before we even showed up today, because we said, isn't this interesting? East-West Gateway, they have to have all these little clandestine meetings with their poll pads, instead of just talking to normal people, knocking on their doors and talking to them. So all these people that we talked to over this time, 100% were against great streets. They don't think it's great. It's really weird, because I'm sure all the council members that keep bringing these plans up with complete streets and great streets, I guess they don't like their cars. Now, I like my car, and apparently, all these other people in Afton, they tend to like their car too. And they were actually, some of them infuriating, as they were driving into their driveway and saying, what do they want to do? This is my government, and I have to explain, this is what your government does while you're at work. They think of ways to create congestion, not my words, your words, with East-West Gateway. That's what they say they want to do, is create congestion so that people get out of their cars. So St. Louis County is one of these gold stars, livable communities, complete streets, resilient cities, smart growth. And I just want to tell you, under that, those stated sustainability goals, they have things called human settlements. So when you're a gold-starred city like St. Louis County is, we create these human settlements. Do we like the way that that's called? I mean, what does that sound like to you? Human settlements. And this means that we're going to do an integration of land use and transportation through complete streets programs. This is all, you can look this up. I've just taken their words, what they say. You can look up on East-West Gateway and what they say they want to do. And on their front page of their mission and stated goal of what they want to do is get us out of our cars. So you can look that up. The second thing I want to talk about while I'm here today is that I know you guys have visited at one point a special counselor to the council, and I believe that it's needed. I believe that it's needed here. I believe that it's needed at the state. I think it's a conflict of interest to have somebody that serves at the pleasure of the county executive when you have a county council that needs legislation that's written. And I feel the same exact way that I do here in St. Louis County, as I do in Jefferson City, that they have to deal with lobbyists. So all the lobbyists write the legislation for them, and they're beholden to them. In this case, they are, you have somebody that's appointed by the county executive that is beholden to the county executive, and that's a conflict of interest.
Thank you. Next speaker is Deborah Erp.
I'm Deborah Erp. I'm not as nervous as last week. All I wanted to ask was a question of Mr. Stanger, because I'm a little bit confused about the agency that exists that's called the East-West Gateway, that is making the decisions for areas where none of these people live. And it says he is the vice chairman. And I am trying to find out who pays the salaries to those, to this group. I was devastated last week when somebody said a bridge was going to be denied, that was falling apart, and we're going to spend the amount of money that it's going to take to redo Gravois Street, when we've already spent the money on Gravois. We've already allowed buildings to put driveways in and not demand that they put sidewalks that cover that area. And it seems sort of redundant to me. Now, I came in, and I'm still not educated on it, and I'm trying to read everything that's written. I respect you guys for being here this late every Tuesday. I didn't know you did this every Tuesday. I just vote for the people I think are going to do the best and let them handle it. This street thing is my limit. I think you should fix Higgy and McKenzie and some of the other things in Afton before you start on Gravois. I think that if the gentleman who owned all the buildings in Gravois would have fixed the holes in the roof and that, you know, Joann's wouldn't have moved out, the women's shop wouldn't have moved out, the Hawaiians, he didn't maintain any of the places yet. He charged prime rent. Schnucks can't rent the one building. So therefore, I think before we not build a bridge, we should consider building the bridge and then not do millions of dollars of changes on Gravois. But this organization, Mr. Stinger, I couldn't find it on their website. How do these people that work there every day get paid just from taxes? Or do you make money going to that meeting every month too?
No.
I'm sorry.
No.
I don't know. I'm sorry. This is my first time.
So East-West Gateway is a, it's the regional apparatus for transportation funding for Illinois and Missouri in St. Louis.
I'm shocked. Franklin County, Jefferson County.
Yeah. The salaries, I believe, are paid through, in part, contributions from each of those counties, and then there's also federal funding that's utilized, and state funding that's utilized to pay salary to staff, but board members are not compensated. Your ex-officio, you know, for instance, St. Louis City Mayor is on the board, county executive, first St. Louis county's on the board, and the various executive offices, office holders from around the region are on the board.
Well, what I can't find is, one of the very first Afton meetings, I went to the first four, and now I've gone, I'm starting on the second, I can't find the federal law that she's talking about that's causing this organization to want to change all these streets, because then we get more federal money.
And ma'am, I can...
I went home last week thinking, I hope we don't just spend federal money because it's there. I hope we're a little more...
I can actually answer one question for you with respect to the lane closures on Gravois. There's no intention to close lanes on Gravois, and no lanes are going to be shut down on Gravois as part of a great streets program. It's just not going to happen.
No. I'm not comfortable with me.
Thank you. I mean, that helps.
Thank you very much for answering my question.
You got it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Greg Brown.
My name is Greg Brown. I'm the fire chief of the Eureka Fire Protection District. I'm here tonight to address you about some issues of public safety, and that's the two bridges in the Crescent area. The bridge on Lewis Road, which was bill number 78 last week that was turned down, and the bridge on Allen Road, as was stated earlier, both these bridges are crumbling. And my concern with, for the fire district is our accessibility to provide service to the, there's at least three businesses, around 20 homes, hundreds of acres of ground, and literally thousands of people utilize this area on a daily basis, that they're in there. And from time to time, we are called to provide service there. With these bridges and the deterioration that they're in, and the disrepair, we're very concerned about the weight of our fire trucks going across them. The rated weights that are posted for those bridges are marginal, but we can go across them now. With the amount of deterioration that's happened to these bridges, we're very concerned, to the point where I've ordered our staff, unless it's an emergency, don't cross them. If we're, if there's a public relations event, or we're out there for some special training, we're not to cross those bridges. It's that serious. We're very concerned. On the condition of those bridges, they were built, as was said earlier, back in the early '30s or late '20s, and they're simply crumbling. The bridge is actually shifting. Both of those bridges are shifting. So I respectfully ask you to reconsider the bills to repair or replace... So, I'd respectfully ask you to reconsider the bills to repair or replace both of those bridges. I think you're probably going to have to replace them. These bridges, if left to deteriorate further, are going to compromise the vital fire protection, EMS, and law enforcement for that area, for the people who live there, for the people who visit there, the people who patronize these businesses. We really need to see something happen there. Further, as was stated earlier, if a partial or total collapse of one of those bridges across Union Pacific Railroad, which they both cross, which carries a large amount of hazardous materials and a huge amount, it's one of the main lines for the Union Pacific through St. Louis County. There's over 60 trains a day go through there. If a bridge goes down, partially goes down, will we be able to stop the train before it hits there, or if it's going under, when it happens? What's going to happen if it's a hazardous materials incident? We're going to be there. We're going to have to respond, but I think this is something that can be avoided. So, again, we respectfully request that you reconsider the replacement of these two bridges. And again, thank you for your consideration on this public safety issue.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Marco Garrett.
I live at 4340 Crescent Road, and I'm here really to reiterate what Captain Brown says. It's really a public safety issue, and it's my understanding that this - the revenue to fix these bridges doesn't come from general revenue. It's from the taxes that we pay for bridges and stuff. And to me, it's very disconcerting to have your fire chief tell you that he's afraid to drive a fire truck to your house. We only have one way in and out of there, and every day, I see at least two school buses go up and down that road. And it's equally concerning that the county council would analyze this and kick it out with the same information that I have. That's all I have. I ask that you would reconsider. Thank you.
Next speaker is Erv Road.
I'm a 40-year resident of Afton, and I'm here to speak in behalf of the project that's going to run from Rivet De Pere up to McKenzie. I think it's a wonderful idea. I like the fact that you're going to have bicycle lanes. I think that - I think it's a great idea that you're going to reduce traffic, cut it down to two lanes. People drive too fast anyway, and it seems to me that most people are afraid of change. And I've seen Afton the last so many years become very stagnant, and we need some things to beautify it, and hopefully, we can - this will go through. I do have one question, though. The bike lanes, are they going to run from Rivet De Pere to McKenzie? Is that my understanding?
I mean, I think right now, I think what's going on is there's a period of public input just gathering. I mean, there's no decisions that have been made, and part of the purpose behind what you've, I think, been experiencing in the community is to gather community input, and before any decisions would be made by anybody, we want to hear what everyone has to say. But as far as lane reduction, lane reduction's not on the table. That won't be happening. But the other elements are all open for discussion, and that's the purpose behind those meetings, is just to gather input from the local residents.
One thought, too. Why not run the - if they do the bike path, people that ride, and I'm an avid rider, that ride Rivet De Pere, you can hook on to Gravois, why not take it all the way to Grant's Trail? You know?
And that could be a great idea, and that's something that, you know, once again, everyone's opinions are given equal weight and the same respect, and we greatly appreciate that.
Yeah. Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Next speaker is Lynn Perry.
I live at 7063 J. Patridge. I want to talk about Allen and Lewis Roads. It's a beautiful bowl of the Merrimack River. The property was named after Mary Leather Lewis. That's what Lewis Road was from. It's been there forever. It's beautiful property. It's fairly isolated because the river bowls through the - when those bridges fail, think of all your families. You can't get home. You can't get in. You can't get out. That's how many families will be affected. The bridges were both built 87 years ago. They kind of went down the embankment, and they put it up in the stone. I'm not if the bridges is when. When those bridges fail, there's no other access. There's no other in. There's no other out. What if you all couldn't get home? Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker this evening is Mary Derek.
I'm also a resident of Crescent. I live at 4340 Crescent Road, and basically, I -
Ma'am, vice chair, can I sit next to the speaker? Can you pull the microphone down a little bit? Thank you.
You seem a little short. But basically, I really am - would echo what has already been said about the bridges, the Lewis Road Bridge and the Allen Road Bridge. Just the safety rating alone is enough to really - when an engineer rates it at those low scores, it really gives you pause to think. As the person that was just up here said, it's not a matter of if, but when. And we do have the school buses that go over there every day, and we would all be stranded there if something should happen, an earthquake or could affect the bridge. It's just, with safety at stake like this, it just doesn't seem to be any reason to deny that. That's all. I just ask you to reconsider. Thank you so much.
Thank you. No more speakers, madam vice chair. That concludes the public forum. We'll proceed with the introduction of bills. Bill number 107, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a fuel sales contract under three subsequent renewals with the village of Hillsdale. Bill number 108, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with St. Louis Integrated Health Network for reimbursement of copays for uninsured patients at county health centers. Bill number 109, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger, an ordinance accepting for ownership and maintenance property dedicated to St. Louis County by Edwin and Susan Hofstadter, authorizing execution of a general warranty to transfer the property interest to St. Louis County and establishing the property as part of the arterial road system. Bill number 110, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page, an ordinance running Chapter 1105, Title 11, St. Louis County, revised ordinance since 1974, amended Department of Transportation by enacting and adding there two, nine new sections concerning relocation of facilities and the public right of way. Bill number 111, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger, an ordinance approving a petition to St. Louis County, Missouri for the creation of the Green Trails Community Improvement District, establishing the district as a political subdivision of the state of Missouri, and directing the administrative director to notify the Missouri Department of Economic Development of the creation of the district. Madam vice chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you. Perfection of bills.
Bill number 98, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move for perfection of bill number 98.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 98 is perfected.
Bill number 99, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of bill number 99.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 99 is perfected.
Bill number 100, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of bill number 100.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 100 is perfected.
Bill number 101, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move to perfect bill number 101.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 101 is perfected.
Bill number 102, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I move to perfect bill number 102, please.
Second.
Second.
He already did.
Oh, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 102 is perfected.
Bill number 103, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move to perfect bill number 103.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 103 is perfected.
Bill number 104, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move for perfection of bill number 104.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 104 is perfected.
Bill number 105, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of bill number 105.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 105 is perfected.
Bill number 106, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move for perfection of bill number 106.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 106 is perfected.
Final passage of bills. Bill number 116, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Please hold bill number 116.
Bill number 116 is held. Bill number 68, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page.
I move for final passage of bill number 68.
Second. Madam vice chair. Madam vice chair, if I may interrupt, that had been held the last two previous weeks by the chair for consideration of a substitute bill.
Oh, okay. I see that.
I beg your pardon for interrupting.
No, I see that. That was my mistake. Okay, I move to hold bill number 68, bill number 68 to be held.
Bill number 86, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move for final passage of bill number 86.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam vice chair, on bill number 86, there are six ayes and one absent. Bill number 86 is finally passed. Bill number 87, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of bill number 87.
Second. Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam vice chair, on bill number 87, there are six ayes and one absent. Bill number 87 is finally passed. Bill number 88, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of bill number 88.
Second. Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam vice chair, on bill number 88, there are six ayes and one absent. Bill number 88 is finally passed. Bill number 89, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move for final passage of bill number 89.
Second. Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam vice chair, on bill number 89, there are six ayes and one absent. Bill number 89 is finally passed. Bill number 90, introduced by Councilmembers Erby, Dolan, and Tracus.
I move for final passage of bill number 90.
Second.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam vice chair, on bill number 90, there are six ayes and one absent. Bill number 90 is finally passed. Bill number 91, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move for final passage of bill number 91.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam vice chair, on bill number 91, there are six ayes and one absent. Bill number 91 is finally passed. Bill number 92, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for final passage of bill number 92.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam vice chair, on bill number 92, there are six ayes and one absent. Bill number 92 is finally passed. Bill number 93, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of bill number 93.
Second. Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam vice chair, on bill number 93, there are six ayes and one absent. Bill number 93 is finally passed. Bill number 94, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger?
Please hold on the order of business. Bill number 94 is held.
Bill number 95, introduced by Councilmember Dolan?
I move for final passage of bill number 95.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam vice chair, on bill number 95, there are six ayes and one absent. Bill number 95 is finally passed. Bill number 96, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger?
I move for final passage of bill number 96.
Second.[1575.83]